Hey everybody, it's your girl Tawana B with Not Your Normal Conversation. Good evening, everybody. I hope you're all well and staying safe. Today I have Nick Vance here. He's running for Boston City Council at large. And I'm not ashamed to say that I didn't know he was running for Boston City Council at large. I, you know, I know Domingos very well. We sit at the table and come up with ideas for different things. He's a great candidate for this race. But there's more people that we need to see. So here we are with Nick.
Happy to be here.
Yes, I'm so happy to have you here and thanks for reaching out to me because again, as I said to you before when we spoke privately, it's important for the communities to know who is actually running for Boston City Council. It's important for us to know before we make the tough decisions. Because a lot of times people will say, as I said to you before, oh, well, they have a black name. Oh, well, they'll look at the last minute, they'll see a couple of things about you and they think that that's enough to cast their vote and maybe even vote for you. And then they'll be upset with you when you don't do what you promised. So we're going to get right into the interview right now, Nick. And I know that you've lived in Boston your whole life, is that correct?
So I was actually born in Plymouth, but I moved here when I was two to Boston. And so I've been in Boston, living in Mattapan on Woodhaven Street for most of my life, going to New Covenant, which is, I always will call it New Covenant. But they changed their name too.
Right.
No offense to them. Yep, grew up, born and raised in Mattapan, Mattapan Square area. Lived in Dorchester for a little bit. Actually ended up leaving, going home, going down to Orangeburg, South Carolina, where I got my undergrad in political science at HBCU, South Carolina State University.
I saw that.
Home.
Yes.
Because the South wasn't for me, long run.
Right.
A little too slow.
Whoa.
Yeah, a little too slow. And I ended up coming back home and started, you know, working and started my career in education and also getting my masters up here. And by the way, congratulations again.
Oh, thank you.
Big news, so.
Thank you.
You know, I always want to commend people who are doing well.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. It was a lot of hard work, but you know, again, I can do anything if I just put my mind to it. I'm glad that class is over, but thank you. Seriously, all the homework did me in and I'm in school on top of being in school. So I'm in two different schools trying to keep up with homework, it's a lot.
That is.
So, you know, you have a great pedigree and I know, I know you probably saw that, what I wrote. You, you come from a great background and you have a lot of people in your family who are teachers, like your grandfather taught Afro-American Studies at Tufts University. You have, you know, I see that you have had a lot of interaction with youth.
Yes.
City Year, Boys and Girls Club.
Girls Clubs, yes.
Yes.
Harvard.
Right. And so, yeah, and Harvard, and that's a big one. What is your campaign all about? Because, I mean, I, I know what it's about, but I'd like for you to tell the people that are listening, what is your campaign all about? And what are you trying to accomplish by taking this seat?
Well, my campaign is about helping people. And I, and I'm really focused on getting back to the basics, right? Being a city councillor, period, at large or, or representing a district. I mean, we, we are here to help communities. This is a unique position where, yes, we get dabble in politics, yes, we dabble in policy work. But at its root core, this is really about everybody in our communities and about how do we represent that? And how do we make sure that your day-to-day life continues to move as normal?
Right.
So, as they, as some people jokingly say, you know that I'm doing my job when you don't have a worry in the world.
Right.
Right?
Right.
But I know you mentioned youth work and things of that nature. I mean, I've been focused on multiple different areas around youth, workforce development, and more importantly, this vaccine.
Yeah.
Which, you know, I know you and I have discussed. But really, I started off my work in youth because I wanted to give back. I wanted to be involved in my community and seeing some of the things I saw growing up, playing basketball at Norfolk Street, playing basketball, notebook, snowball.
Yeah.
You know, you see a lot of things and, you know, unfortunately, I've buried friends.
Right.
I played basketball with at a young age. And I always thought to myself, if I could find a way to get young people off the street, I would do so. So, you know, we worked at Orchard Park, Warren Gardens, Washington Street Park, really trying to make sure that we told young people what we were about, what things they could get involved in, but then also tailoring our programs that best fit them. So instead of just saying, we're going to do classical art.
Right.
We were talking about graffiti art and talking about
Right.
magazine art, those kinds of things. But as a campaign, I'm, I'm really, right now, laser focused on how do we recover from this pandemic? And talking about not only getting through the pandemic, because that's been the major focus of everyone, is just getting through it.
Right.
Right, making sure that on the back end, that all the communities in Boston, especially communities of color
Right.
have representation and also make sure that there's real money and real funds allocated for how do we get back, right? I mean, people aren't talking about what happens when moratoriums end.
Right.
Are, are we going to ensure that there's money put aside so that tenants can pay? Or are we going to give money to landlords so that way they can continue to keep the lights on?
Right. I, I, you know what? I was just listening to you saying that you're, you know, you would like to fill this seat primarily because you're focusing on the pandemic. So now here's where I play the devil's advocate.
Sure.
Before the pandemic hit, black and brown communities were still bad.
Absolutely.
And we could never come up. And now the pandemic hits and now this is another struggle that we have to, we were already in poverty before. We were already having trouble with the cops in our neighborhood before. All of those things were happening before, the gun violence. Whatever was going on there, it didn't just start because of the pandemic. As a matter of fact, it actually heightened people's need to be outside, even with the pandemic going on and bad things are still happening. So what do you say? Because I don't, I know for me personally, you know already that I was formerly incarcerated and I've been to the inside and I've watched people come in from our communities. And a lot of times, they don't have the bare necessities to make it through. And sometimes it's not their fault. It's just the way things are set up in their life, unfortunately. So to me, I feel like it's more than just a pandemic that's holding the black and brown communities back. So how do you plan to dig up from under that rubble? Never mind the pandemic, if I set that to the side, black and brown communities would still be in trouble.
Absolutely, and you're absolutely right. And I'm glad that you mentioned that because that is, as Fauci said, I mean, this pandemic, if anything, is just shining a bright spotlight on the inequities that have been going on across the country.
Right.
As a city as a whole, you're absolutely right. I mean, and that's why one of the major things I'm focused on is workforce development, which is actually a part of my background, right? Is when Encore Boston Harbor came, one of my number one things that I did is how do we get more of our community these quality jobs, right? And what I have seen through my studies, even my dissertation is on workforce development.
Wow.
What I have found is that there's a disconnect. We have great trainings, great programs, but they're not linked to actual jobs, right? So what I have done is I've worked with creating a dealer school with Cambridge College, where people can learn how to become a dealer directly. Those jobs pay nineteen dollars an hour plus, right? Getting jobs directly. And the casino is just a microcosm of what we need to do, big picture.
Right.
The number one thing that I would propose day one is that we create a workforce development panel, right? That is made up of community leaders throughout the city of Boston who have their expertise in workforce development. So like the Urban Leagues, the Mass Hires, the Career Links.
Right.
These type of places and saying, hey, all these new businesses that are coming in, right? You have to do actual workforce training that are linked to actual jobs. And this isn't a huge feat, right? So when I worked at the Harvard Ed Portal, Amazon was doing trainings for people to fill those roles that were getting paid twenty-four, twenty-five dollars an hour, if not more, with room for promotion. GE left Boston because they said that they didn't have a steady pipeline of quality applicants. Well, guess, let's flip that on its head, right? What trainings have they done? Who was holding them accountable to make sure that people were get, right? The word that, where everybody keeps saying equality, right? The word is equity, right? Not enough equity in the city of Boston.
Absolutely.
And growing up in these communities, I have seen Dorchester look exactly the same as what it looked like when I grew up there, right? The fact that we're still talking about.
You still think it looks the same? I'm going to have you put a pin in that because I disagree with you. And I, no, no.
Well, it depends where you're at, and I'll get to that too.
Right. No disrespect, but things started to change in Roxbury and all of those places because gentrification was coming through and white people thought that they were going to move back to closer so that they could get to work quicker and all of those things, so.
They call it the reverse flight. We're in a reverse flight. So people's parents that in the sixties, seventies moved to the suburbs
Right.
to get away from the city, their kids who are my age now and they're thirties and forties, they don't want to live in the suburbs, they want to live in the city.
Of course.
And here's the number one issue that runs into, and that's where we get to housing.
Okay.
Because one of the number one issues that we have as a city is that our AMI doesn't make any sense for affordable housing. And, and I'm going to dig into it. What that means is, right now, we already know for a fact, The Globe has done multiple articles on this, right? Where you need to at least make eighty-eight thousand dollars a year as a single person with no debt to, and to be able to thrive in this city.
Okay.
Why is our AMI capped at sixty thousand a year, right? And then you're asking people to still afford homes that are fourteen, fifteen hundred dollars a month.
Exactly.
Right? And they're not factoring in that people still have car notes, credit card debt, have student loan debt, right? So I want to live in this city. My wife and I tried to look for a home. The waitlist right now for affordable unit, how, how long do you think it is?
It has to be over ten years.
It's ten thousand people long.
Exact, huh, so that means that.
For every, you know, they give you those things. Yeah, so they give you those things where they say, oh, there's twenty new developments that have affordable housing. Well, guess what? When you apply for it, you have thousands of other people ahead of you, right? And God forbid you get a raise, because the moment you get a raise, right?
You're right.
You're out. That year later, you got to move.
Right.
So it's one of those things where, why are people spending fourteen, fifteen hundred dollars for a room to share it, right? Part one is we got to make sure that we give people access to quality jobs.
Right.
Right? And that's, and yes, will it be a grind, but we need to have the conversation. We're not even having the conversation.
Absolutely not.
The reason why Roxbury is getting gentrified right now is because there's lack of homeownership. Because people can't afford to, could you imagine? People right now that are making eleven dollars an hour just because the minimum wage went up.
Right.
Right? Could you imagine if they were making twenty dollars an hour, twenty-four dollars an hour, right?
Right.
Right? With the prospects of being able to move up, right? People can then make more decisions about where their kids go to school. People can make different decisions about buying a car. I mean, if anything, it helps the economy. But one of the other things, and they talk about this on the national level, is we have to be careful when people get excited because the minimum wage has gone up.
That means everything else goes up.
Exactly. Inflation follows it.
Yes.
So, so I say that to say, I am really focused on making sure that people have quality jobs because, to be quite honest, it's a trickle down. If you have a great job, then you can own your home. Why do you think there's been less gentrification in neighborhoods like Hyde Park? Because a lot of the older Trinidadian, Caribbean, Haitian people own their homes.
Yeah.
Right? It's harder to tell somebody to move. I mean, I just went to my neighborhood association and there was forty people on there. They're like, nope, 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 don't like.
Absolutely not.
Absolutely not, you can't move here. I don't want a condominium to move over here. There's not enough parking as it is.
Right.
But when you go into communities like Roxbury, that is a high rent neighborhood.
Yeah, it is.
Right? Rent is high, I mean, Dudley is a perfect microcosm of Roxbury, right? I have talked to owners throughout there that own Silver Slipper. I've talked to people who.
I went into labor there.
Wow. So, great food spot, by the way. I, I look at me, I'm giving them an ad already. But all these places are telling us that rent is going up exponentially all the time, right? We already know that there has been a bigger crackdown on letting people loiter through there, right? Because they want to change the culture. We've already seen the blueprints. They want there to be a target, they want there to be all these things. They want it to be the new South Bay. And, and hey, some people may like that, that's cool, but we can't do it on the backs of people who are hurting. I mean, I've gotten two calls from people who own, who said they're just going to sell, right? They have no one to talk to, there's no one that's advocating. They've reached out to their elected officials and nothing has happened, right? And rent has doubled, tripled, whatever. And, and we need to have strong advocates at City Hall that's going to say, whoa, wait a minute. You know, and press up to the mayor, right? Because we're a strong mayoral system.
Yes.
So I always remind people, you know, and sometimes I, I laugh when people are running for this seat and they say, well, I'm going to tell the mayor that he's going to do. I was like, that's not how it works. You have to work in congruence with the mayor and say, listen, these are the issues, right? These are the benefits if we make these changes.
Right.
Right? And you have to create buy-in. This is like Congress. This isn't where you could just say, and you still need nine out of thirteen people to vote for your approval just to get it out of the council.
Now, see, this is where, okay, again, I'm going to play devil's advocate.
Go ahead.
You, you know, the thing that I realized about the mayor, Mayor Marty Walsh, he was invested in some communities, right? But he didn't always listen to everybody's voice. The governor definitely doesn't listen to the public's voice at all. He ignores everything because basically, once those people got into office, they did what they wanted to do. So for me, I feel like if you are a person of color and you take that seat, you already are guaranteed there's going to be pushback. Someone is going to push against you and say, uh-uh, it's been this way for a long time and I don't want it to change? Or you're not the right skin color to change it.
Well, first of all, I'm a Mattapan kid, so no is just another answer of, we're going to have another conversation.
Absolutely.
So that, that doesn't scare me. I think the biggest thing though, right now, is, well, first of all, I'm going to answer that in two part. One, I have pushed back against Marty. I was on his mayor millennial council and you could actually find the article on CBS online.
And I'm going to look it up.
Yep, you can look it up, where I actually challenged him. And I was supposed to be representing him, but we were on a chat together and he was talking about how great the affordable housing was in the city of Boston. And you'll hear me clear as day on the recording say, absolutely not. It is not good. I'm living, at that time, I was living in my father's basement. And I said, do you know, at that time, I said, do you know what the average is that people make when they get out of college? It's like thirty grand, it's like thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars a year.
No one can live off of that, living in, in Boston at all.
Not at all, not at all. And I, and I used to support the core members when at City Year. I mean, they were making the same amount of money in their stipend. Right? You cannot live in Boston making that kind of money. And I said, and it's disingenuous to say that it is, right? I said, I see luxury housing every day pop up in all these different neighborhoods and all these different sections.
Right.
Right? But who is that for, right? That's not for me. I mean, I see a new luxury apartment being built over there on Talbot Ave. Who's that for? Who, who's going to pay thirty-five hundred dollars a month? Four thousand dollars a month for a place that's smaller than where I rent right now?
Absolutely.
And, and I, and I really pushed up on the mayor. So, and at that point in time, I had no political ambitions. I mean, that was 2016.
Right.
But I say that to say, I think we're also though, in a great opportunity where we have a chance to put somebody in the mayoral seat. It's very hard to knock off an incumbent, we all know that.
Right.
So the fact that we have new leadership, new life there, I think now's the time that we can really have that dialogue. Now's the time where you don't have all these big, huge interest groups controlling
Right.
the conversation, right? It's hard when, when you have like a million unions telling you, you can't do this, you can't do that.
Absolutely.
Right? We're, we're at a standpoint now where I think there are, and potentially, three people that we know of already running for that seat are, are previous city councillors. So they would understand where the city council is coming from and I feel like they would be a lot more keen to hearing what our opinions are.
Absolutely.
And where things are going. And I like the fact that all of them, including the men running, have platforms that are talking about, you know, you know, trying to find new ways to engage the city and engage communities of color. Now, we got to hold them accountable to that.
Right.
Just like I would expect someone to hold me accountable for the things that I'm saying. So I, I'm not afraid to continue to fight the good fight if it's worth while. You know, I want to make sure that our communities can thrive after this. I mean, and, and it's not, and the sad part is, is people try to make it seem like it's this complicated puzzle for why communities of color aren't thriving. I said, it's very simple, right? It's very simple, right? We need to have more access to opportunities, right? We need to have more equity for our communities of color, right? Why are more people of color getting sick? It's because we have jobs that we cannot leave and survive, right? We have people who are bus drivers, police officers, firefighters. I mean, these are, are essential workers, right? And they have to work and they have to keep grinding it out. And if we don't have these conversations, but as I said, conversation means nothing if there's no action at the end.
Absolutely.
Thing is that day one, and I'm sure you could hear me getting fiery about this. Day one, I want to go in there and kick the front door open.
You need to blow the building up. Never mind kick the front door open because we've kicked down some doors before and we still weren't let through. We were let through the front door and they will open the back door for us to run right through. We have not, as a community, been as successful as, I can see things coming up. I can see things coming up because Rachel Rollins is in office. I can see things coming up because of the new mayor that's, you know, sitting in the seat who has decided to run for mayor. You know, people of color running for Boston City Council, that is a great thing. Those are all steps in the right direction. But honestly, this system is more than broken to the point where you can't try to repair it with Gorilla Glue.
No.
You definitely have to build a new system and it has to be strong because as communities, we need to come together and be strong too. We can't just use you, yes, you're the voice, but there needs to be some open door policies in this, in City Hall. We need to start opening up the doors to the public to let people express their concerns. I've heard people say, I emailed Governor Baker's office and I still haven't heard back. I emailed the mayor's office and I still haven't heard back. So then they become discouraged and this is when we start to take matters in our own hands and makes it ten times worse than what it is. I mean, what do you think about? Because I remember speaking with you about the MEKO program because I know that you've worked for the MEKO program and I, I too went to MEKO and I'm sure a lot of people that I know growing up went to MEKO. But why do black and brown people have to be bussed out to another public school, but just in a white area to get a great education? Why is it that we don't have these schools in our community with better books, with better teachers and better councillors who are not telling our kids that we're going to end up dead or in jail? Why is this not happening? Because I, I love the MEKO program because it gave a lot of people opportunity. But come on now, every black child in the community needs that same opportunity and they shouldn't have to be on the waitlist to get there.
No, and you're absolutely right. And, and I'm going to be careful not to put in a MEKO plug here.
Absolutely.
There is no waitlist right now, so.
Oh, praise God.
Now, if you want to get in.
I, I asked you guys, so if you heard it, he said, there's, there's no waiting list, so praise God for that. And I'm going to tell everybody I know that.
Yeah, absolutely. And tell them to apply. And, and the number one, so you said a lot of great things there. So I'm going to, I'm going to touch on a few of them.
Absolutely, go right in.
So I think the first thing that you were talking about is about not just kicking the front door in, right? I think though, one of the biggest things we've been lacking is consistency.
Absolutely.
And consistent open door policy. I'm one of those type of people, I call everybody and everybody. I mean, I will, I call people back that people are like, oh, Nick, you know, that person's crazy. And I'm like, well, that crazy person has an opinion, right? And they called me, so I'm going to call them back, right? I, I have also said that the number one thing that I would pledge to do is that all these town halls are messed up now, right? I don't want to go to a town hall anymore where I see ninety minutes worth of someone talking and then they give you five minutes to say something.
Absolutely.
And then by then, it's like, oh, oh, give it to my handler, give it to so-and-so, my aide is on the call, I got to go. It's like, no, I think that I would come on, it should be succinct. This is what I've been up to, this is where we're at. But now I want to know what's your issues? What's going on? As small as the fire hydrant still doesn't work on my street to, hey, I feel like I'm being pushed out of my community, right? So those are the type of conversations that I want to have happen. Those are the type of day-to-day grind. And you know what? Yeah, you got to work a little harder to do that.
Right.
But it's not that hard, right? It's about hiring a team that is also committed to that vision, which is just, no matter what, people should have direct contact, right? Or at least get a call back. My, I tell my team that nobody should wait longer than twenty-four to forty-eight hours.
Absolutely.
Right? Especially if it's an ask. If somebody, I can't tell you how many people who have reached back, where I've reached back out to them and they're like, oh my God, you called me.
Right.
Right? They're like, oh my God, like, is this actually Nick? And I'm like, yes, this is Nick. And yeah, I get it, at some point, you may be in a meeting and you can't answer, but you should call them back.
Right.
Right? And you should be mindful of that. I think because that is how we change the culture. That's how we get people to feel like they're more included in City Hall, right? And, and of course, I know, I, I've been on the outside of City Hall for most of my life, right? So I have seen the kind of, you know, hey, how do we get in the City Hall? You know, you hope to God you know somebody that works there.
That's always how it works.
And then usually then they're like, well, I'm not the decision maker, but I could tell somebody, right? But I think that it's, it's that level of consistency and that level of being, and then more importantly is being authentic.
Absolutely.
I have done many things in my life. I've worked for corporate America, I've worked for small boys and girls clubs with shushing, true string budgets, right? But I've been the same person throughout, right? You know, I've gone to an HBCU where, where, where a very small campus to being a Northeastern. Which is a very large campus with a lot of money.
Yeah.
Right? So I say all that to say that you can't let things change. And if you're going to run, it's got to be from an authentic place. I mean, running, period, is a daunting task.
It is.
So I always tell people, if you're going to run, stay true to you, right? I'd rather lose, but stay true to me than, than win and be some fake guy that, you know, you're hitting me up a year from now, like, Nick, you know, what, you having me back on your show? Like, what happened? You know, where, where have you been?
I'm glad you know me, Nick, because that's exactly what I would do.
Exactly. So that's, that's the biggest key, I think, with building that kind of equity. I think the other thing too is really pushing to make sure, like, right now, a lot of times, city council has been very reactive about issues. Like, things will happen and then they respond, right? I mean, it took a while for us to hear from City Hall about the pandemic, other than the mayor's office.
Right.
Right? And, you know, for what it's being said, I mean, we need to be proactive, right? Like, there should have been a message immediately about Black Lives Matter when, when those things started happening, right? There should have been an immediate press release that said, hey, you know, we understand people are hurting during this pandemic. You're in constituent services.
Right.
Right?[1669.86] Right? Your job is directly working for your constituents, right? There should have been day one, hey, this is Nick Vance, I'm just trying to make sure you're okay, right? Are you able to social distance? How is the school thing going, right? That leads into school, right? We know for a fact right now that childhood depression is at an all-time high, right? I mean, uh, we, we were, I was just talking to somebody that works over at a children's hospital and they're getting more and more kids because they're isolated, right? We're, we're not built to be isolated, right? Kids not being able to see their friends, they don't know why. They don't really understand the pandemic, the fact that they gotta wear a mask, they barely go to the park. And then you have this winter, so people are stuck at home and, and people are struggling with school, right? We know there's gonna be an educational gap when this is over. And anybody who tells you there's not gonna be, because I've heard it, is lying to you. There's going to be issues, especially with our young brown, what, you know, brown children. It's gonna happen, right? Because there already is that inequity already. So, and as you said with Mecca, Mecca, as we all know, was created over 55 years ago to really hit a key issue of busing and the fact that our schools were redlined, right? But in many ways, other than the charter school program.
Right.
Uh, surging here, it still is that way, right? Like, I mean, your zip code does tell you exactly what exactly is going to education your child's gonna get. There, there should be no reason why a kid graduating from Dorchester High, right? Should have different outcomes than a kid graduating from Melrose High, right?
Absolutely.
There should be no difference. And, and I've lived both of those experiences. I mean, I was in BPS over at the Lucy Stone School, right? Up until fifth grade. And I know exactly, sharing one TV for an entire building, right? Spending more time, teachers making copies because the books are falling apart.
Yep.
And we have amazing teachers, right? Like, we need to support our teachers and, and that's why I pushed that teacher should be vaccinated. When that whole question came up. So the only way that Mecca should be dissolved though, is until that inequity is changed, right? And that's, and that's gonna be my pushback because otherwise, as a parent, you're stuck between a rock and a hard place because most parents can't afford private school.
Uh, no, you're right.
Milton Academy, Nobles and Greeno, Thayer Academy, those schools are $55,000 a year.
Like going to college.
It is, it is. And even if you can get them on some kind of scholarship, you're still talking about thousands of dollars a year that most of our families don't have, right?
Absolutely.
And as we just talked about, many people are just trying to own their home, which they can't. So they're still renting, let alone being able to pay for that. And Mecca plays that pivotal role because it gives you a third option, right? I don't think options are a problem because one, charter schools don't have enough room at the moment for all of those children. Like, if we dissolve Mecca, you're talking about 3,300 students that now have to come back into a school somewhere, right?
I'm not necessarily thinking about dissolving Mecca. I'm saying, why can't our children be afforded the right to go to Mecca? And more importantly, what about all the parents who are homeless with their children? And I mean, there is so much going on that anybody that takes a seat anywhere as an authoritative figure is gonna have a tough assignment. I mean, you got defunding the police, the community doesn't trust the police. You have Mass Ave, which is a, I, I've never seen it this bad and I'm almost 50.
I was just there serving food not too long ago.
I was, I'm, you know, I'm almost 50 years old and I have never seen the things that I am seeing in that part of town. And also, I have never seen that many cops in one area do nothing.
And, and my fear, but my fear with, with, I call it recovery mile. I don't like to call it methadone mile.
Absolutely.
I have, I have sat and talked to many of those individuals over there and they are great, kind individuals that are just stuck in, in a vicious cycle.
Absolutely.
And, and I've had people tell me like, oh, well, they're addicted. I was like, you shoot up maro- uh, heroin and tell me that a month from now, you're not gonna be trying to get your fix every single day, right? I mean, it, it is a drug. But I also want us to be very careful and I'm glad you mentioned this because this is something that I've really been trying to wrap my head around. Because one of the biggest issues though, is them fixing the island isn't the answer, right? So Mayor Menino, as you may know where the island is, where the kids go to camp at Camp Harborview, right? You know, there's the bridge in Quincy that collapsed. I've been over that bridge a million times. It, it, I thought it was gonna collapse then, but that institution that used to hold for rehabs and stuff, out of sight, out of mind, isn't helping, right? That's, that's not the answer. And I know a lot of people are like, well, once the bridge is done, we'll clean up the streets and those people will go there, right? And I said, first of all, you lost me at those, right? Because those people are Bostonians. Yeah, some of them have been transported from other parts of the state and dropped off there.
Right.
But we have to find real solutions. I mean, the, 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 it almost feels like we've given up, right? It's just like, oh, well, we're giving them a safe place to shoot up. What? You know, like that, that's the solution. We're gonna put a ton of cops making a hundred dollars an hour, right? Just watching these people.
Wasting tax payers money because I pay taxes. So yeah, that's exactly what they're doing.
Me too. And, and one of my things is when we opened Encore, there was a huge concern because remember, that's a major thoroughfare from the airport.
Absolutely.
A lot of people come through there to get downtown.
Right.
And, you know, they were like, oh, you know, how do we give money to clean that up? I was like, it's, it's more than that, right? We need to talk about, and people are saying, well, let's round them up like they used to do in the days and bring them somewhere. I said, listen, first of all, uh, I used to listen to all the seminars over at Dimic, right? Forcing people into rehab never works, right? Right? The number one thing they tell you is in rehab, they have to admit that they have a problem.
And they also have to want it more than you want it for them.
Exactly. So us just sending people to this island to then, God knows, do what? But the fact that we don't see them, that, that can't be the solution. I'm okay with them going to a housing facility.
Absolutely.
But we have to be talking about real rehab programs that get them back on their feet, right? That, that gets them off of drugs and helps them become productive citizens again. Because again, people are like, oh, you know, I'm afraid to go over there, whatever. I've, I've been there a few times, serving food in the middle of the night and no one once has ever tried to hurt me, say anything crazy to me. They've been actually extremely thankful that they're getting a hot meal.
Of course.
They've been thankful that we treated them like a human.
Absolutely.
Right? And that's the part that I'm afraid of is we are becoming desensitized to being human beings, right? And, and we can't allow the city to make decisions that just says, well, they're them, right? Because then what's next? Black people, Hispanic people, they're the thems, right? Right? And I said, and it's not lost on me that a lot of those individuals look like me.
Absolutely.
Right? And it doesn't take much to go down a bad spiral. I mean, I've met people out there that used to be professors.
Absolutely.
Right? But they got hooked to something that they couldn't get off of. So, you know, I don't want to go into a deep diatribe, but I am committed to remembering that these are humans. And these are individuals that, that need help, that need care. I, I don't understand why we're just saying, well, they're there because they're close to the hospitals and they can get Narcan. I was like, well, yeah, but Narcan, I've seen Narcan's creator talk and say that it's the best worst thing that's ever been created. Because it's great because you're saving lives, but it's bad because now people are taking bigger risks.
Absolutely.
People know that there's a safety line, right? So how do we really help people? And hospitals right now are at capacity. So the fact that we're talking about a pandemic, we're talking about people out there and, and and that's why folks are starting proponent passing out masks.
Right.
Right? Why aren't we passing out masks to these individuals, right? All of those individuals that live in that area, they need to have masks. They still deserve PPE, right? We can't just say, well, I'm gonna keep my window rolled up. So, you know, if they have COVID, whatever, right? That can't be the answer. The answer's gotta be remembering that humanity, right? Because that could be any of us, that could be any of our family members, that could be anyone. And, and I don't put myself above anyone, right? So I, I think that it's one of those things where, yes, I think we should try to fix the problem. So it's not that craziness. Like, I mean, I'm watching people falling over every day that I drive through there.
Absolutely.
And I'm always wondering myself, like, is the cop gonna get out of the car? Are we gonna call the police? When? What, what do we do? You know, but you also touched on something earlier too, that I'm not radical enough either though to say to defund police, right? If somebody breaks into my house, I'm not trying to call, uh, you know, a helpline, right?
And I agree with that, but that, that's not what defunding the police is to the community. Defunding the police is saying, stop, give, first of all, we, we want to give all this money to communities to build more prisons when our kids are suffering because they don't have a proper education. Defunding the police is not taking their jobs from them, they have a job to do. It's taking their extra pay when they're sitting outside of Mass Ave in their car, watching people stab each other and fight. That's the money they don't need. That's the money we're trying to take away. Because you cannot defund the police because some people need them. If your kid gets shot on the police, uh, on the street, I bet you, you're gonna call the cops.
Absolutely.
So that's not what this is.
And I just wanna, the reason why I bring it up is because I also think there needs to be some education around that. I totally agree with you, right? I 100% agree that we have to have a better level of accountability of where these funds are going.
Right.
Right? But I also know that many people don't understand what GoFundThePol- defund.
Defund the police is, of course they don't.
People are like, yeah, the police, we needed to fund them. And, and I'm like, but what's gonna go at its place, right? Because they're like, no, we need to get rid of cops. I'm like, what? I was like, I don't think that's the answer.
If that's the answer, and you, and you said that, and I'm glad you spoke on that because on Saturday, a 74-year-old grandmother was sitting on her porch minding her business and got shot and killed.
I, I, I posted something right when I found out about it.
Yeah.
And I, I just, I've been doing a lot of stuff lately, as you know, working with elders and trying my best to save, I mean, I feel like every shot is a life saved.
Yes.
And, and we've done almost 5,000 of them at this point.
Mm-hmm.
And the fact that you can't sit on your own porch, uh, and yet they can say whatever they want to say. It was a stray bullet. First of all, people shouldn't be shooting anyway.
I agree.
Uh, but you, when you can't even sit on your own porch and you're talking about a 70-year-old woman? I mean, where's the line, right? Where, where does the line in the sand come up and be like, that's because my generation, it took a village, right? I mean, the older women on my street, you didn't even talk out of the side of your neck.
Didn't talk back, but what by them?
You have a slipper coming your way, you would have something, you know?
Right.
You would get home and all of a sudden your parents are like, oh, I heard you talked to so and so.
They already know.
Out of line and then you're like, whoa, how did you? So, but we've somehow lost that along the way. Because now people, I know for a fact, people don't talk about other people's kids, people don't talk to their kids. But the fact that there's this lack of respect for our elders, I mean, you know, it's just, it's just beyond me. And I, I just, and this isn't even really an elder issue. The real issue is just that people should feel safe to be at their own home. People should feel safe walking down the street. People should not feel like there's all these people running around shooting guns. Uh, a woman got shot and killed at the end of my street when I lived on Charlotte. I'm not gonna say her name out of respect, but you know, we all remember it. It was during the, the carnival, it was right before carnival. She was one of my coworkers, worked with the Boys and Girls Clubs, walking down the street with a lawn chair and somebody was shooting down the street aimlessly and she got shot in the head and died before she even hit the ground. And it's like, why should people feel that way? And as we talked about, I'm from Mattapan, I've seen a lot of things.
Right.
Right? That we don't even have time, nor would I want to talk about on this thing, on this platform. But we have to toe the line, right? And it's not enough to do a parade, it's not enough to do a walk. You know, I've done all those, right? You know, you know, we're gonna protect our communities and we walk around Franklin Park and we walk around all these places. It's action, right? What are we doing to make sure that these guns that have dropped four or five hands now?
Right.
Right? They were their older cousin's gun that's now in prison and now they found it in a shoebox and they're running around with it in their car. I mean, my own teens have been arrested recently over having guns on them because they're afraid, right? So you got this weird cycle going on where kids are afraid of other kids hunking them.
Right.
Right? So how do we change that system? And, and we can't just rely on the police because as you said, there's that level of distrust, right? And I, I wouldn't lie to you and say that there has been times I've been pulled over where even I'm like, I'm gonna turn on the lights in my car, I'm gonna make sure they can see my hands, you know, because I'm a large black man. And I've had interesting interactions when pulled over, so.
Interesting is, is an understatement when black people get pulled over nowadays because they end up either getting shot and killed or badly injured.
In Virginia with the, the guy is in uniform, he's in military uniform.
And he maced him right in the face.
He still maced him in the face and dragged him out of the car. And it wasn't until his commanding officer showed up, when then all of a sudden it was like, oh, well, maybe. And, and the other problem too is I shouldn't have to feel like my identity is in jeopardy, right? Because I'm not always dressed like this. Some days I'm wearing a hoodie, I'm wearing sweats and I'm driving around, you know? Do I have to always remind people like, oh, I'm an upstanding citizen, you know? You know, oh, hey, you know, I, you know, you know? Or if I make it in office, oh, I'm a counselor, don't, don't shoot me, right? You know, it, it, we shouldn't be in a system like that. And, and I also admit that those are small apples, right? Like, they're not all cops aren't bad. I mean, I've done plenty of basketball leagues.
Aren't bad, you know, we, we have, I was just speaking to someone about this. We, we have to start holding people accountable for their actions. Meaning every, every individual, when it comes to prior bad acts or bad acts, hold them accountable. You can't say that all black people are bad. You can't say all white people are racist. You can't say all police officers are bad because there are some police officers that I could, well, my uncle was a cop for a long time in the city of Boston. And so I think a lot of times I know some of his friends and I, and they seem like good people outside of wearing their badge. And so for me, I, that's just like someone saying, all convicted felons will never stop going to jail. That is a label that people shouldn't have to carry around. And us as black people, we shouldn't have to carry that whole cross on our back that we've been bearing back since our ancestors, just to get somebody to treat us with some dignity and respect and say, hey, we deserve housing too, hey, we deserve a raise too, hey, we deserve to not be homeless. Hey, we deserve to not be on Mass Ave and be treated like we're, we're still in slavery. We, we would deserve those things. But what a lot of us do in communities is we sit down at our tables and talk to our sisters and our brothers inside of a house and then we go outside and like you said, there is no action behind anything that is said. And this is why it is important for me to have people like you on the show who's gonna say, okay, this is what I plan to do if I do get into office. Now, just so people know, and I've been saying this every time I interview somebody running for Boston City Council, don't get mad if they can't do everything they say they're gonna do because it isn't always that you, you don't want to do it. It's that someone is blocking you from doing what it is that you need to do for our community because it's happened so many times. You have these small businesses where people are closing down, small businesses where you, you were going to that store since you were five years old and now all of a sudden the store is closed down because they don't have the money to upkeep. And sometimes they're being robbed by people in their own community. It's, I, I think it takes more than just a, a Boston City Council man or the mayor or the governor or the president even, because shoot, the president don't seem to have that much. People still get shot and killed every single day. It takes normal civilians like me and like you, when you're not sitting in that chair, to really make a difference. And if we're gonna just say all these things, we need to stick together and do them. Like, we're so busy taking out each other instead. Do you know how strong we would be to- together? Together, we would be a mighty force to be reckoned with. It's like divide and conquer. We want the city council to fix everything, but we're not willing to do the same thing.
And that's what made the Black Lives Matter movement so dangerous is because it was the first time, I mean, I talked to my parents, right? Who grew up in the 60s.
Mm-hmm.
And it was the first time since then that they've ever seen large-scale protests like that.
Right.
High amounts and especially orchestrated by young people.
Right.
That were like, hey, we, we need to hold them accountable. I, I want to also remind people that, you know, I, I've worked with people on the national level, local level. I worked for Hillary Clinton for a while.
Mm-hmm. I saw that, yep, yep.
One of the biggest things that people should remember is don't let your momentum go, right? Our communities are historically known for, in a moment of crisis, we'll come together, we'll go gung ho, we'll go after some people.
Right.
As time goes on, we go right back to our normal world. And people that are part of that thought process of not helping us.
Right.
Know that. Then we'll, we'll just ride it out. We'll just wait it out, we'll hear what they gotta say, you know, we'll ride it out. I, I told people this all the time, you know? We were doing peaceful protests all across the country.
Right.
Getting pepper sprayed, pushed back, slammed down on the ground. I mean, the, the ex-president did that just to take a photo up with a Bible that looks like it's never been opened, by the way. But then a group of armed militia can run and break into the Capitol and essentially hold the Capitol hostage for almost two hours, right? I said, but we're the prop, right? We're the issue. Uh, you had 6,000 National Guardsmen out in DC when Black Lives Matter protests happened.
Yep.
Right? And Congressman Clyburn says it perfectly and he's an SC State alumni. So him and I, I got to do some stuff with him throughout my time at SC State.
Mm-hmm.
He said it perfectly. He said, if you want to know hypocrisy, just look at that, right? Just look at that, like, I mean, if you look, you can literally get a still image of the Capitol building back in June and look at the Capitol building in January.
Yep.
Right? And it's a stark difference between the level of protection.
Absolutely.
Right? And, you know, it, I just think that we have to stay woke, right? It's okay to say, oh, we're woke, right?
Right.
To stay woke, we need to stay understanding things. And my part that I could play in this, and I've told you this, you know, as Tyler Perry once said, right? If they don't give you a seat at the table, you gotta make your own tape.
Absolutely.
My thing is that I'm not there to, you know, blow up the city council with, like, we're not gonna do anything until I get my way, that, because that doesn't work as you just, right? But what we need to do, right, is be strategic, but also be unapologetically who we are, right? Of people of color. Unapologetically, a black man. I was born that way. I will die that way. Uh, my thing is that we need to be strategic and intentional about telling people what the real issues are. Getting off of it. I mean, that, why do you think people love Byron Rushing and people like that? Because they stayed focused. These are issues that are going on and we need to address them, right? Oh, yeah, you wanna talk about busing routes and stuff like that? I mean, but we have to stay focused. Council, at one point, yes, we were talking about how do we figure out this special election? Right? But why at the same time were we not having the conversation about the pandemic? Everything, all I heard nonstop, I went to every meeting, nonstop, was special election, special election, special election. Right? But at the same time, people are dying. I mean, at dur- at literally, look it up. During that month, we had one, we were in the middle of a spike. In ma- in Boston, in Massachusetts as a whole. So my thing is, where were we when it was time to talk about that conversation, right? As 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 uh as Mitch McConnell always says, I should be able to be able to walk and chew gum at the same time.
Nerd to say that, woo child.
Yeah, he did. But you know, it is what it is. We won't get into Mitch Mitch. But my thing is that why can't we have both conversations, right? People are bringing up the pandemic. Right? And and I'm gonna be honest with you, and this isn't just the council. I've seen this across the board. Now, all of a sudden, everybody's involved with the pandemic, right? Because it's sexy. Right? People wanna say that, oh, I was in charge of helping people get vaccinated, whatever. It should have been from day one. Right? Why do people need to pull people to say, hey, get involved? We need help. We need funds. Vans. I mean, I remember back when the vaccine first came out. We were like, how do we get these elders? Do these vaccine appointments? Right? How do we help them do the vaccine appointment? I mean, I was working with the Department of Public Health. And I was like, why do people need to fill out a dissertation? I'm confused. Help an elder fill out this application to then find out that you don't have any slots at that time. Right? So, yes, the process has gotten better and I commend uh the Black COVID Coalition and CIC over at the Reggie. But we have, we should have been doing that from before. And that goes back to what I said. We gotta stop being reactive and proactive. Right? We know what the issues are. Right? And I tell people this too. It's cool. We could talk about housing, funds, things like that, but it doesn't mean anything if we can't get out of this pandemic. Right? If we can't get out of this pandemic, it doesn't matter, right? And that's why I don't want my message, as I said earlier, to be misconstrued. Yes, I'm laser focused on this pandemic because we have to. We have to get out of this, right? I am tired of hearing from my friends that are in a hospital trying to breathe. Who are my age because they wanna go to Cancun, wherever they are going because they're not taking this pandemic seriously. We live in multi-generational homes. We have to do better for our senior citizens who may not have gotten the vaccine yet. So, that's why I said I'm committed to this pandemic. That's why I said I'm committed to people of color. Because if we don't be the megaphone, yes, I'm one man. And yes, I don't think I'm Superman and I can fix all things. But we need to have someone that is constantly, you know, what do we like to use to say? Pull your card, right? I wanna be constantly pulling the card of everybody who's elected and saying, but wait, don't we also represent these communities? Also represent, and that's not to say that people are hurting in Austin, Brighton. Within last end. I mean, North End, West End, their number one business is restaurants. Right? And as you mentioned, those PPE loans dried up a long time ago. How do we keep these restaurants open that are mom and pop that have been owned for centuries? Can't keep them, right? And that's a part of what I said about putting money aside. These need to be unrestricted funds. I don't want Tawana to wake up and say, I gotta fill out a twenty page application so I could get a thousand dollars, right? That makes no sense.
Bad. And and you wanna know the thing that's crazy? You're saying that and and I and I've seen a lot of people get these loans that don't really need them and they already have all the money they need. And we, again, because I I think it's all a fluke if you ask me. They know there's a lot of black and brown people who don't read the fine print. They don't sometimes even know how to read because they don't have the education level that someone who already has enough money invested in their company to they were giving out loans left and right in the in the black communities, they were still left behind. And they were saying there was no more money. Well, how could that be? There's no more money for us. Say that. To me, that sounds more truthful than just saying, uh, there's no more money.
Listen, they they just spent billions of dollars to make sure that the airline business stays afloat, right?
It's all about business.
But but if there's nobody to get on the plane, what difference does it make if your plane is running all the time? And that's why I said our priorities are messed up. About giving all these extra funds to these things. And I see someone asked a question about how do you stay in business during method on mile? It's like, well, first of all, we gotta make sure that we take care of the people on method on mile. But at the same time, make sure that those businesses can stay afloat and make sure that they can balance their checkbook. Right? I'm not gonna say that you're gonna be able to, you know, be in the black. I'm just saying that we gotta at least keep you from being in the red. Making sure that businesses can thrive until we get to a point where everybody can be where they need to be and we can get out of this pandemic. And of course, it's a national issue. And and we're a transient city, so there's a lot of people flying in and out of here. People from Texas that don't social distance or whatever, keep coming here. People will get sick. But I wanna have a normal summer. I have a daughter on the way. I wanna be able to have people visit her in August when she enters this world.
Congratulations.
Thank you. But right now, I mean, I can't even go in the hospital. Person to see an ultrasound yet, not once. I get the videos, I get pictures. But why am I being told even now that I may be the only person in the room when she gives birth? People may not see the baby until she comes home. That is the problem, right? And that's what's going on. So, you know, I know we're over time. I just.
No, no, no worries. And and you know what? That's what makes this platform unique. When you're done talking, I I'm here for it. But again, Nick, I appreciate you coming on the show and I appreciate you sharing with us your campaign and for letting people know who you are. Because again, if you hadn't reached out to me, I would have never known that you ran for, you were running for Boston City Council at large. Again, it's our duty. Like you said, it's our job to know these things. It's our job to stay educated. It's not just enough to be woke. You have to stay educated. You have to know who people are in your community so that we can get to the next level. I have to say this before we end the show. There's a lot of people I know who can go into the state house right now with a felony record and get a job because they know somebody and because of the color of their skin and nothing else matters. And it's time for us to start extending our hands to our people the way that they do to their people. It's time. The time is now. We don't have any more time to waste. Like you said, this pandemic is, it's been almost two years that we've been locked up.
Everywhere I touch, I'm petrified.
Can you imagine just getting out of jail, coming home, being home for only one month before you go back into lockdown?
Yeah, no, I mean, a- a- and to make it even worse, I mean, uh, look at the people in jail that are not getting the adequate help that they need. And that's why it was spreading like wildfire. Right? All across our 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 penitentiary system. And I think you're absolutely right that we should not be putting money in to build more prisons, right? Because first of all, we already know that model doesn't work. Right? And we definitely don't need to be privatizing prisons, right? That they need a quota and and I'm not a quota. So, um, I I think that we we one hundred percent just need to be intentional. And I think you're absolutely right. I can't tell you how many times, even me, I'm I see myself as a political hack. I live on CNN. My wife has to kick me off of CNN cuz she thinks it's too depressing. I watch the news every day and even I, I'll be honest with you. I mean, I've gone to plenty of elections where I'm like, I don't even know who that is. You know, like, who is this person on the ballot? I don't know who that is, you know? And you're like, and then you're like, well, I think that sounds like a name of color, right? I mean, you know, you're like, okay. You know, but unless you're Ayanna Pressley or you're any of these other people, I don't even know who you are, right? And I think we're gonna have that same issue if if these conversations don't happen because, I mean, theoretically, you could have nine or ten people running at large. I mean, District Four, they have a, you have Jacob Uren on the other day, right? I mean, you got a ton of people running in that.
I had three people running from District Four, Nikia Jean Charles and Joe Richards and um, Jacob. So, yes, and there's more.
Ryan Worrall, you got Will Dickerson Jr., you got a guy named Troy Smith, you got, I mean, the list is Leonard Lee. You got like a ton of people. I think there's almost more people running in that seat than mine. So it's it's one of those things that we need to be educated. We need to know who each other are. But also, it's not a bad thing to get to know the other people when you are the candidate. I mean, I've taken the time to try to learn who other people are, even if they're not running for my seat. Like, who is that? Okay, interesting. Their background, right? You know, obviously, I still wanna win. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't be educated and that we shouldn't know who people are and where they're coming from and what are their backgrounds. Uh, because name recognition is one thing, but what are you gonna do? Right? What are you gonna do when the job gets there? And then you also gotta make sure that you have people who are prepared day one. Right? Because, you know, it's, you know, a lot of times people say, well, you know, and I know there's a bigger conversation going on right now about should city council term limits be longer? Right? And I know there's a whole conversation because people are saying two years is very tight. I mean, by the time you win, you're running again. You know, it's hard to be able to sit in a room and say, look at all that I've done. Really had twelve, fifteen months of actual work where you weren't wondering, damn, do I need a fundraiser? Do I need to call somebody? Do I need to start campaigning? Uh, me personally, I'm indifferent to either two years or four years cuz I see the arguments on both sides. You know, four years cuts people off because, say, you elect somebody and you don't like them, right? You know, they don't work out for you. You you have a chance to mo- vote them out. So, so, but yeah, I mean, I think I think we are at a great place and I think it's an interesting time to be in politics. I mean, it's the first time that I remember where you actually, I don't like to call it an open seat cuz, you know, Kim Janey, I I I wish her all the best and I and I hope that she can do what she wants to do. I I think she has a great platform that she put out. Uh, but you know, theoretically, you're talking about a vacant seat, right? So you got a lot of people who, you know, are gonna be interesting and and at most it adds interest across the board.
Absolutely.
Right? So it's it's gonna be a really fun year. It's gonna be exhausting. But I think there's a lot of quality people and and I've heard great things about all of these candidates. And I'm more importantly excited that there's more people like me that are in my age demographic that are running. Very rare that you see under forty year olds jumping into races like this.
I'm very impressed with the age group here. You know, Nikia Jean Charles, I think she's the youngest. She's eighteen. She said when she was fourteen, she went into the state house and found out that that she was doing work in the community, that she could run once she turned eighteen. And she made it her business to start her campaign because she was in the making at fourteen and she knew that her some things in her community had to change. You know, even Jacob, he's he's young. You know, a lot of these guys are really young. And again, that's another problem that people have. You don't have enough money to make a good commercial, then of course, people are not gonna know who you are. If you don't have enough money to campaign, of course, people are not gonna know who you are.
And I think and I think that's something, really quickly, I think that is a big issue, right? First of all, it's already hard as a candidate of color to raise money. Second of all, you're in a pandemic where, you know, a good portion of people have been laid off. Them giving you money is not really a priority for them, right? But two, I also think that, I mean, three, I also think that one of the biggest issues is, as you said, is how do you bring equity in elections? Right? How do you make it so it's a level playing field? Uh, you know, I mean, let's be honest, it's a dirty game. You hear people talk about, how much money do you have? Your bank account. And and some people take out massive loans. Uh, so that they can show that they have a lot of money in the bank, right? But is that necessarily, uh, is that money raised, right? Is that money that really people constituents wanted you to have? And are we doing that just so we gain favor? Or are we, or are groups really listening to people and talking about what they have to offer? That's a big piece. And I do believe in term limits also. I mean, my thing is, I don't like it when I see people serve forever. I mean, I you, I do not plan on being in my late forties still having this conversation with you because clearly that means I wasn't effective in the first few years that I was in office. I mean, I think I think that it's open to debate on how long term one it should be. Uh, but I also, for, I do not like the fact that if Marty chose to, he could be mayor forever because he had the war chest, he had the team and he had the buy-in to pretty much be Menino two point O. I like the fact that, but I also think we have to change the culture of fear about running against incumbents. Right? And because here's a perfect example. I I know many of the people running for D four. Right? I know many of them and and I'm happy for all of them and I wish them all luck. But some of the things that I hear is, oh, well, you know, I I didn't like that Andrea Campbell did this and did that and and she should have been more involved with this. Why didn't you run then? Right? I mean, why'd you knock her off? But I also say the same for my race, right? I mean, when I jumped in, there was only Wu was out for my seat, right? But then I've hear people give answers saying, well, I'm running because there's two open seats. I'm like, but but I also think, as you said, we should be careful about narratives because the first time, when I first started running, the first question I got was, so you're trying to knock off Mejia? And I was like, why would you pit two people of color against each other? I mean, at that time, you had Anissa Sabi George, you have an open seat and you have Michael Flaherty, right? Nobody asked me about those other individuals.
I think that a lot of times we don't pay attention to what matters the most. And I don't care who's running. I wanna make sure that I know all the people running so that I can make a decision that is gonna help the community. Nothing else matters at this point cuz we're in the fight of our life. So if people are watching the show, this is Nick Vance. He is running for Boston City Council at Large. He is one of the candidates running for the seat. I will have him back again before he go before, if he gets enough signatures to get on the ballot and then he makes it um, to time for voting. I want him back on the show so that you can ask all of the questions that you need to ask. I don't live in, I don't live in a city anymore, but I was born and raised in Boston. And more importantly, I just see the injustices, not just on the outside world, but also in prisons and jails. And I think now's the time for us to start changing some things for us.
Absolutely. You're absolutely right. And you know, I would love to come back on anytime and talk. I mean, I I actually get excited about having these. Because they're being hacked. And you're on a platform where it isn't just barbershop talk. We're we're in a space where people can hear and people can talk to us and people can see what's going on. And and I really am focused on, and if any of the, anybody on the chat wants to reach out to me, they can find me at nickvanceforboston.com which is my website, or they can reach out directly to me uh at the nickvanc campaign at gmail dot com. Um, and and I'm I'm around. I mean, and I uh, literally, people call me and I call them back. People email me, I email them back. And and I just wanna connect with folks. And and whether you vote for me or not, the beauty of my race is I'm one of four, so you could vote four times. Right? So I always remind people, yes, people love bullet votes where you just vote for me and keep it moving. You can vote four times. And and I want people, as many people to participate in this election as possible. I am tired of seeing those statistics of thirty nine percent of the city voted or less, right? Remember twenty thirteen, eighteen percent of the city voted in that Mayoral election? Uh, and that was supposed to be a hot year, right? So, uh, I appreciate the conversation.
Absolutely, absolutely. Our votes matter, people. It's time for us to start getting out to vote. It's time for us to start changing the narrative in our communities. Um, only we can make that change. It's not really, it's not up to the mayor, to the governor. It's up to the community to come together and say, hey, listen, we've had enough. So I know I've had enough. I've just had enough of seeing the things that are going on that no one's willing to fix. So Nick, I appreciate your time. Thank you for coming on the show and speaking to people and letting them know who you are. Um, everybody, Nick Vance, I'm not your normal conversation. He'll be back, guys. Don't worry. He's not off the hot seat yet. He's not, he's not off the hot seat yet. I, I let him talk this time. No, I let him talk this time, guys. You know me. I, I get him warmed up for the second show and then I come back. Ask Joe Richardson, he, Richards, he thought, he's like, oh, my goodness, what? He's like, you didn't tell me you were gonna ask that? Of course, because it's like surprise. I think if I start writing down questions like I did when I first started this show. And sending them to people, they already have a script. I want people to be transparent. I want them to be honest about who they are and what their intentions are. I, I can't have it any other way. So.
That's the best way to do it. I've, I've never asked anyone to write a script or to tell me what the questions are in advance. Because at the end of the day, um, if you're not speaking authentically and off the top of your head, because what, at the top of the head is what you really mean.
Absolutely.
And, and that, and that's why this type of conversation is important.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us on Not Your Normal Conversation. I'll see you guys next week. Have a blessed evening and stay safe.